For Tuesday, July 9th, 2013, and we'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Mike Den is going to be late. Barbara Doss is going to be late. Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
And Dick Bonin?
Here.
The first item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. A, minutes of the 6:25-13 regular council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, financial report for June. D is appointments to boards and commissions. And this evening, I am appointing Ela Kekdi to the community development board. And licenses, this information was in your packet, one or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic, fermented malt beverages, and intoxicating liquors. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, I will note that if you wish to speak, there is a form on the table as you came in that we would ask that you fill out so that we know that you're going to either speak during this time, or if you have a particular item that's on the agenda, you can also list that. The first thing I would like to announce is that the public is invited to an open house thank you reception on Thursday, July 25th, from 4:00 until 5:00 p.m. It will be here in the council chambers. And it is to recognize all the sponsors who helped the city of Platteville present at the All American City competition. So we would like to recognize those sponsors. And the public is invited, and snacks and beverages will be provided. Again, that's Thursday, July 25th. That's right before the party in the park from 4:00 until 5:00, and it's here in the council chambers. I believe that Howard Crowe fit has something he would like to note.
Thank you all. I think most of you were here yesterday and were introduced to our new street superintendent. I'd like to introduce to you and to the public, Mr. Bill Johnson. He is replacing Paul Button, who retired yesterday. This is his second day. Bill hails to us from Beloit, and we want to welcome him. He's still smiling, so things are going very well. Thank you all, and I just wanted to make sure that we had you meet him officially, and the folks in the studio audience and at home, meet him as well. Bill?
Thank you. I am, hopefully, I can do half as good as Paul did. I appreciate the city manager and the public works director hiring me, and I'm here to help. Give me a call or email if you need something, and we'll go from there.
Very good.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Under other citizens' comments, observations, petitions, Darrell Browning? Nick, yes. And again, when you get to the microphone, if you ever give your name and your address, because we do use that for record-keeping.
Hi, I'm Darrell Browning. My address, 3785 South Chestnut. Okay. My name is Darrell Browning. I'm here to show you in person that the city manager hasn't put me in jail yet. I contacted the village of Dickieville and asked to speak to the building inspector, who is also our building inspector. Now, my question is, one is Rick working for the taxpayers of Platteville, and one is he working for Dickieville. How does our city manager keep track of Rick's time? If he is not keeping track of this, please ask him why. On the radio, our city manager stated that my property does not meet minimum standards. Now, if my property is that bad, why haven't my assessment go down? Why hasn't my taxes gone down? Gone down? Please instruct the assessor to lower my assessments and send me my refund. You, as the elected city council of Platteville, are the boss of the employees of Platteville. You can fire them, tell them to sit in the corner. You need to control your employees. I was at my Board of Appeals meeting, and there was also two council members, and I asked them to stop me if I don't tell the truth. Our building inspector was asked a question. If Joe Carroll had not put him back in his chair, I think we would have needed a bucket of water to cool Rick off. This is the building inspector you get behind closed doors. The building inspector also stated that my dealership looked different than Runde Chevrolet. I have made an amazing discovery. Pioneer Ford, Huber Sachs, and Von Glan's lot looks different than Runde Chevrolet. If you are using Runde's for basis for the look-alike code, then African-Americans look different, Chinese, and the Japanese also look different. What then are Runde boys? Wouldn't it be easier just to treat all residents of Platteville fair and equal? Our building inspector also stated that when the city manager came to town, he wanted it cleaned up, and Rick was to aggressively enforce city code, even though neither one of them read it. If they did, they didn't understand it. If they had, the judge wouldn't have ruled in my favor. Or did they just use the part they think will allow the city to steal my property and give it to the university? Also, our city manager has been on the radio stating, "I'm only being held a minimum standard of city code. I have requested a copy of minimum city code and have not received or heard anything from him. I suggest you have him show this to you." In court, under oath, Rick stated that he uses the strictness of either the IMBC or city code when he is terrorizing the taxpayers of Platteville. I suggest that our city manager find out what code Rick is using. On the radio, he stated he is going to reissue the citations to me. I have not received them yet. If you're going to state publicly that you're going to do something, then like Larry the Cable Guy would say, get her done. The city look-alike code, otherwise the city looks like a fool. There is a rumor, and rumor only, that Mr. Burke, he has a job waiting for him with the UW system if he can steal my property. I call upon the university system to confirm or deny this rumor. At my Board of Appeals for, I appealed to the Board of Appeals for a ruling on my violation. As I was informed, it would cost $500. But yet, the men and women sitting on that board aren't paid a dime. And for the argument that the city officials there needed to be paid, if they are salary, they don't get paid overtime. To go in front of the Board of Appeals is your right guaranteed by city code. Therefore, it should be no charge, especially when it is, the board volunteers their time. In the auto industry, when an employee messes up, but it costs the dealership money, we charge that loss, we charge back the losses. Our city manager just went on a three-day holiday and didn't come home with the prize. I suggest you charge him the cost of that trip. Please bring your employees under control on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Schmider to talk about an auditorium update.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Schmider. I live at 670 Lancaster Street, and I am currently president of the Friends of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium. First of all, let me thank you for allowing me to give you the update on what's happening at the auditorium and what will be happening at the auditorium. But before I start that, let me first say, I did watch the All American City presentation. Most of the audience has heard about it, if they haven't watched it. And did you know, we have a stage downstairs, if you would like to do it again for the people of Platteville? Just something to think about.
We actually used that stage to practice.
So first of all, let me remind you that the mission and the purpose of the Friends of the Platteville Municipal Auditorium is to encourage the usage and the renewal of the auditorium in Platteville City Hall. We've done some renovations, and you've seen those, the more comfortable seats, wider aisles, better sightlines, with wheelchair-accessible spots sprinkled throughout the auditorium and not just left at the back of the auditorium, like you might see in any theaters. The paintings have given it a nice, bright new look. So what are we doing next? We're in the process of working on some, you know, nailing down some numbers to get the electrical that we need in order to install a sound. So we have a bid for sound, and we're working on negotiating some electrical. We hope to have that done shortly. It's really going to depend on Lifeline's schedule as to when we can get on their schedule to get the sound done. You may be actually wondering to what has happened there? What's been going on? So I went out to our website, as well as the calendar that we've kept for things that have happened in the auditorium. In 2012, things that have happened in the auditorium are the St. Mary's School production of Captain Noah and the Only Zoo Cruise for twos, the Southwest Academy of Ballet Arts Student Showcase, Memorial Day observances. There are church services that are held in there weekly from September through May. You may not be aware of this, but in conjunction with the Festival of the Arts, last year, we did a costume photo shoot using the steps of our city hall, and at the same time, did auditorium tours to raise the awareness with the public. The Grant County Historical Society did a presentation on Grant County and the Iron Brigade and their role in the Civil War. Tri-State Home School Network produced My Father's Dragon. We had the Veterans Day Observance, Santa's Arrival in Platteville, and Coco and Carol's. That was in 2012. Keeping in mind that there are several months throughout the year, the auditorium can't be used because it's just too hot. Wanted to let you know what are some of the events that are coming up? We actually have quite a few things that are scheduled just between now and the end of the year. Again, we're going to be doing a costume photo shoot and auditorium tours in conjunction with Festival of the Arts, so watch for that. It'll be something that'll be interesting, even if all you want to do is tour the auditorium and see the improvements, see what it looks like in the dressing rooms, as well as the light booths, that's a great opportunity, and hear a little bit about the history. In October, we are having a, well, it's a professional show called The Stupid Economy. You may or may not have heard of it. Chrissy Hoag does this as a one-woman show, where she portrays six different women and how they're affected by the economy. This was written by one of our local playwrights, Robert Lynn, who's from Dubuque. And just a week and a half prior to them performing it in Platteville, she will be performing it in New York City. So this is really a big deal, and I would encourage you, if you have the opportunity to just Google The Stupid Economy and look at what that's all about. And of course, watch for the ads for when it's coming. Ken Killian's big band concert is scheduled for the Sunday before Veterans Day, tentatively called The Greatest Generation. We're really excited about that as well. There are two occurrences of the Grant County Historical Society bringing in speakers in September and November, again, our Veterans Day Observance, and the Southwest Academy of Ballet Arts performance of Thumbelina. So there is a lot going on in the theater, and I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of everything that's happening. You can see that we're starting to move forward, we're starting to get more usage, which is really our end goal, and we're starting to bring the theater up more into the awareness of the public. That's all I had.
Thank you. We have two other individuals who have asked to speak, but I believe you want to wait and speak when the topic actually comes up. All right. Next is reports. These are in the packet, so if you have any questions or comments, committee reports, museum boards, Stockhausen?
Nothing.
Commission on Aging, Bonin?
I'd just like to point out that the senior picnic will be held on Wednesday, August 28th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the United Methodist Church. Food will be donated by Country Kitchen and the Dairy Queen, Dairy Queen, or B. Games and stuff.
Redevelopment Authority would be Doss, and she's not here right now.
Yes, she is.
When did you sneak in? All right. Do you have anything you'd like to add for the RDA?
No.
Okay. Plan Commission?
Barb's speechless. I can't hardly believe that. I had to get a word in edgewise.
Plan Commission would be Nichols and Den. I have nothing to add, and most of what we talked about will be on for information later, anyway. Other reports that are in your packet, the Library Block Redevelopment Feasibility Study. Wanted to make sure that you got this early enough so that you could take a look at it. If you do have questions, you certainly can email those to me, or to Larry, or to Carolyn at the library. It might be helpful for the consultant to have some questions ahead of time. She will be here on July 23rd to discuss the report. Airport Financial Statement, Water and Sewer Revenue and Expense Report, the City Attorney Itemized Statement, and the Department Progress Reports are also included in our packet.
I have some questions about the progress report for departments.
All right.
The first one, City Attorney, maybe a city manager or somebody from the audience can answer this, says, "reviewed UW REF application for tax exemption." Can I be enlightened about that? What's that exemption for?
Okay. The, there's a second residence hall being constructed on campus, and it's being constructed by the Real Estate Foundation. It's my understanding that the Real Estate Foundation will, in turn, make that a building that is owned by campus. Dennis, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. And that had to file an application with the city, with the city of Platteville, to get tax-exempt status as a foundation, much like they did with Roundtree Commons. And our attorney reviewed that application. Our assessor had conference calls with the attorney, and it's my understanding that it has received tax-exempt status.
Thank you. And my last one for the City Attorney is, "purchased a 35 acres M/L." What is that acronym for? Joe, you know that, or Howard?
When you see an M/L, usually in real estate or survey terms, it's more or less.
More or less?
Yes.
This is likely the 39 acre?
I think he means the 39 acres for Rosemont.
Okay, so that's, that one, they couldn't use the approximate. Okay, next one is, underneath Director Administration, Health Insurance Committee- reviewed Survey Results. Anybody, Dwayne, can you talk about that? What is this survey about?
We had a survey of the city employees about the health insurance, what they like about it, what they don't like about it, and other questions that were on it. And we're just trying to get a survey back. We got some pretty good results, about 50, I think, out of 85 returned, and we just kind of went through it in our health insurance committee.
Okay, next question is for Joe Carroll.
If I could jump in here, Mr. Killian. If the council was unaware, we did form a staff committee to review our health insurance. We've been notified by our carriers that it's likely that our health insurance will go up substantially in the next year. And we wanted to make sure that employees had a chance to get first reaction to it and try to figure out, well, if it does go up, what kinds of things can we do as employees to try to minimize the impact of increasing premiums? And so I'm proud of the staff taking the step forward to be proactive in addressing the health insurance. So I applaud Dwayne as the chair and working with that group.
Okay, next question is a matter of terminology, I guess. Process several curb appeal grant requests for the RDA. Is that the same as facade program?
No. Go ahead, Joe.
Joe?
No, that's a separate program the RDA adopted. It's kind of a one-time situation. They allotted $20,000 for small projects that would improve the appearance of buildings in the downtown that are basically visible from the street. Basically, projects that weren't large enough to, you know, bother with the facade improvement program, but would have an impact on the appearance of the building.
Okay. Next is a question for EMS. Public information items. Do you have any comment about, it says EMS calls for 2012, 471, calls for 2013, 534. And then ALS calls, 105-180. Anything that you can say as far as the big increase for each one? That's quite a difference, 63 and another one is 75.
There isn't. We've, over the last two years, we've seen a marked increase in the number of calls. Last year was actually the busiest year that we've had since we kept computer records in seven years, with 1,052. And we're just seeing the trend where we're getting busier and busier.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no rhyme or reasons to a certain type of call. We've just been markedly busy or busier.
Okay, thank you. The last one I have is a question for DPW. Stormwater ordinance revisions as necessary update stormwater utility ordinance. This has been in your list both of these for a number of months. What is the progress on these as far as state and local? Are we doing anything on this, or what's happening?
Not much with it so far. I've been concentrating on a lot of the other issues at this point in time.
Well, I can update you on the utility. The state of Wisconsin just passed a budget bill that says we can no longer create a stormwater utility. So that's coming to an end.
It will come off next time.
As of January 1.
So the state is doing less emphasis on stormwater management?
No, quite the opposite. They're doing more emphasis on not allowing municipalities to transfer services to utilities that otherwise would have been covered under the tax levy. So they're taking the tax levy limit to the next level, saying we can't transfer, much like what we did with the garbage fee previously as part of our levy. By taking it out, it freed up the levy limit to pay for other expenses that we couldn't under the levy limit law. So you find ways of transferring expenses out, and we can no longer do that for probably about four or five services. Stormwater, fire service, snow plowing, transportation, and stormwater utilities.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I would like to mention that we're having the open book tomorrow with the assessor. So he'll be here from 12:30 to 4:30. So if anybody has any questions about their assessments, they're welcome to come upstairs to the assessor's office and talk with him. This is your last chance before the Board of Review on August 7th.
Okay. Anything else from any other department? Any other announcements? Okay. We're going on to action items. The first one is the Ordinance 1312, creating section 4102, public intoxication prohibited and amending section 110, schedule cash deposits. Doug, do you just want to give an overview of this again?
Sure. The, excuse me. The city council identified the adoption of a ordinance prohibiting public intoxication.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Excuse me. City council identified the adoption of an ordinance prohibiting the public intoxication as one of its priorities for impacting alcohol-related issues. At the council's direction, I sought out options for an ordinance on this topic and presented the accompanying ordinance to you folks.
Anyone have any questions about the ordinance? If not, a motion will be in order?
Motion to adopt ordinance.
Who got it?
Ken?
I heard Barb first. I think it was Barb.
Whatever. Barb is second. Barb is second, all right. We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is purchase of industrial park land. And we do have one citizen who would like to speak to that, but I don't know. Larry, if you want to talk about that?
After the purchase of, after Emmy Roth purchased 19 acres in our industrial park, we were left without any larger lots. Our existing lots in our industrial park are remnant parcels, or I believe we have one five-acre parcel. By purchasing this 39-acre parcel, it would give the city of Platteville an opportunity to attract perhaps another larger industrial user. With the assistance of Paydick, or quite frankly, Paydick did all of the negotiations and worked very closely with the city on this. We've secured an option on a 39-acre parcel along East Side Road, and the land is currently owned by Mr. Rosemeyer and some of his family. The acreage is relatively level, it's contiguous to our existing industrial park, and it's a natural expansion for our industrial park. It's being proposed under the staff note from Melissa at Paydick that we go forward and purchase the 39 acres. Today, we did have several discussions at the staff level about the lot, and at this time, we have reviewed any existing easements, we have reviewed the title policy that is likely to come forward, and we're at a point where staff is comfortable with the proposal. So we recommend approving it.
So just for my clarification, because you and I had a discussion earlier today about some questions about, that were raised via the title insurance, those questions have been answered?
Yes, there was quite a flurry of emails all afternoon regarding all of the concerns that had been raised by the city attorney. And I believe at this point, the city attorney has given me the go-ahead, and that this is no longer, there are no longer outstanding items of concern.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we do have one person who would like to speak. Jim Schneller?
Basically, my name here is Melissa's proxy, so I'm just, I'm just.
Proxy up.
He put you would like to speak.
Proxy up, yeah.
Proxy up.
Yeah, my name is Jim Schneller. I'm here on behalf of Melissa Paul, since she is out preparing for a wedding, and is a member of Paydick. And I guess just basically here to answer any questions that I might be able to assist with this, although I think everything's been taken care of. And as well to remind everybody that this is an investment back in our city as well. You know, if you take a look at what the industrial park, the city putting that up and providing that has brought to the city as far as jobs and businesses and so forth, this is just a continuation of that. I think, once we sell land, I think it's imperative that we acquire additional land to continue expanding and providing those opportunities. Thanks.
I left a message for Melissa Paul and found out she's out of town. My question to her and to you, Jim, is, she mentioned about 1,000 jobs created since 1984 in relation to the industry park, and I was wondering if there's any breakdown on what these jobs are like? In other words, how many jobs are more than $100,000? And do they have benefits such as health, retirement? How many jobs are 75,000, 100,000, 50, 75,000, 45,000, 50,000? Then we get down to about 40,000, that's about $20 an hour. So I'm just trying to find out, of the 1,000 jobs, what has been created?
I certainly don't have that information, Ken, but the council has been presenting this in past years, as Paydick has justified its funding to you folks, or whoever was on at the same time, showing the jobs, and there's been studies done by the university as well that have indicated what the impact of that is to the community. I'm sure we can get those for you. But I would remind you that all jobs obviously are benefiting someone. And how many of those would not have occurred had not land been available, had not infrastructure been available? I can't say that. But we know that it does, it does provide incentives, it provides opportunities for companies looking to locate here, looking to expand, and so forth. And I think if you go across the state, in almost any state, and take a look, almost all communities of any consequence or size, of certain sizes that are attempting to attract businesses, have some sort of program, some sort of industrial park where the infrastructure is in, and lots are quote-unquote shovel-ready. So here again, this is, this is an investment in this community and for its future growth. Now, we can dig out, or I'm sure someone has got the studies that have previously been done, and I'm sure we can get you the data that you specifically require or request as well.
I was curious whether they had any studies on this?
You can take a look at the quite highly compensated, some of the engineering staff at, for example, Avista, to some of the, to the more jobs that are in the lower range as well. I mean, there's a whole gamut out there. I'm sorry, Barb.
I was going to say, Ken, if you check out the Paydick website, it actually lists
I was going to say, Ken, if you, uh, check out the Paydick website, it actually lists the, uh, businesses in the industry park, and it also provides a profile of those. Now, I haven't had a chance to check all of them as I sit here, but I do know that some of those provide some of that information. There's also a very extensive, um, uh, area on the Paydick website that, uh, talks about workforce. So, um, I, and I know that there's been a lot of time spent on, uh, upgrading and providing information on the website, because in fact, we are very confident that that is the way, uh, potential, uh, people who might locate in the industri- industry park are getting information. They're not getting it out of magazines or other kinds of things. They're getting it through these online, um, avenues.
There are statistics that actually show, uh, that many companies filter out those that don't have, uh, available land, or don't have, in many cases, a spec building and so forth. So, again, it's enabling, it's enabling businesses to relocate here or to expand here.
Well, I was trying to find out, uh, if a job is paying twelve dollars an hour, are there benefits to that job as far as health and retirement? So, I'm just looking at, in, in a way, the frequency distribution, uh, what, what's happening as far as, uh, the whole scale, the high end and the low end.
I understand what you're doing. I understand what you're asking for, and I, I don't know what, uh, what exists out there specifically. I do know that there have been studies shown, and the university has participated in those, that indicate the economic impact of, of the, uh, businesses out there to the community. So, which is significant. So, I'm, I'm not sure if you're going after that, if the jobs are in a certain level, it's not worth investing in to provide it?
Well, do you, I thought you had, uh, information in your covenants as far as the level of jobs that count as for reducing the price?
There are, that's in the land price formula. That's correct. In, in the land price formula, there, there is a, a portion of that, uh, which reduces the cost of the land to a particular business that qualifies, including different levels of jobs, of compensation, total compensation, including hourly or wages and, and benefits. There's also a portion that, uh, is specifically dealing with the improvements to the land, how much money is spent on the building. Those different levels determine how much the land will cost to a qualifying business. And it could be anywhere from, uh, nothing, where the full price of the land, uh, is charged to them, and it could go down to a dollar an acre.
Well, as you know, we need jobs that support people, and not just something that's part-time.
Well, I think, Ken, it, Mr. Schneller has tried to answer the question and doesn't have that information in hand, so, you know, we can certainly talk to-
Oh, I, I was just asking if it was available.
Yep.
Yep.
Not tonight.
Thank you.
But it is available, but just not tonight.
I'm sure it can be, uh, it can be put together.
Okay.
Any other questions, uh-
Thank you.
-that I might be able to answer pertaining to this acquisition, or the post-acquisition?
We have one, uh, spec building, right? That's rented out?
Uh, the city no longer has a spec building.
We don't have one sold to-
No, I bought the last spec building, and Hypro is in that.
Okay.
Is that money somewhere that, uh, fitting?
In theory, the money exists somewhere to use towards different things, yes.
And what's it gonna be used for?
Well, I don't know, but I would, I personally would like to have it, uh, put up another spec building. Now, I understand budgets are tight and so forth, and probably the proceeds, the remaining proceeds of that may not support that. But here again, we do know that in many instances, large companies will first filter their search on available land and buildings. Uh, and even if we don't sell the building to an individual, uh, company, it gets them here to look, it gets them into our community, and we have an opportunity then to convince them that they ought to expand here. So, this is a whole different issue, but I would, uh, I think I and the majority, if not all, of the Paydick staff, uh, board would like to see another spec building be put up, but that's, uh, let's get the land purchase first.
Well, the last spec building took, what, seven years to sell?
That's true.
And we were told, well, you'll probably sell it in five years, or it didn't happen?
Nope, it didn't, but we were able to, by the, because of that building, Hypro expanded. You know, that's a, that's an additional twenty-four thousand square feet of manufacturing space and the, and the jobs that, uh, that came with that, that allowed them to do that, because that building was here. Hypro has multiple plants, um, which they certainly could have expanded elsewhere. So, I mean, I think that's a, actually, I think that's a, a really, uh, good example of why the land and the facilities are a good incentive for companies to do it, to do, to expand here. It, it makes it easy for them to do that.
You wouldn't have Southwest out there either if you wouldn't have a spec building.
Yeah, that's true. You know? Uh, would we have L and M? I don't know, you know, so.
So, I'm asking for the city manager then, thank you.
Yeah.
Motion to approve land acquisition of parcels two-seven-one-oh-oh-three-eight-four-zero-zero-zero-zero and two-seven-one-oh-oh-three-seven-five-zero-zero-zero-zero. Approximately thirty-nine acres, uh, at a cost of twenty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars per acre.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
And a question for the city manager is, um, we have this money from the spec building. Where is that money residing right now?
Uh, right now, I believe it's within the city's general fund, set aside for another spec building.
All right. We'll vote. Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is award contract twelve-thirteen for street maintenance. Howard?
Yes. Um, the council allocated fifty thousand dollars towards street maintenance. Uh, we solicited bids for two-inch and three-quarter inch overlays, as we have done in, so in the past, uh, done by Iverson Construction, and their, uh, price for the two-inch overlay is eight-twenty-four per square yard, and price for the three-quarter inch overlay is three-sixty-three per square yard. I do have some additional information in here from our last, uh, uh, fiscal note, based on questions that the council members have. Just so that people understand, these overlays do in fact, uh, reflect the cracking up from the underlying pavement, and that's usually after a short time period. The idea here is to keep the cracks small and tight, have a relatively smooth driving surface so that we can extend the life of the pavement. Uh, we use the two-inch overlays on, on roads that have a poor structural strength, and the three-quarter inch overlays on, on additional roads. I have information from the two thousand nine through two thousand twelve, um, uh, overlays that we have done, um, and some of the conditions on some of those streets. For example, last year, University Plaza and Greenwood Avenue, uh, they were done, uh, and they, they're going to have some repairs done this year under warranty. These were two streets that were in extremely poor condition, and it's more or less a Band-Aid so that we can, uh, figure out how and when we can put them, uh, into our plan for, for full reconstruction. Uh, the other years, uh, we've got, I have a list of which, uh, what the bid prices were, how much we paid, and the streets in, in different pages throughout the, the, uh, listing here, um, for two thousand eleven, two thousand ten, two thousand nine. Uh, I do have a correction. The, uh, last time we talked, I said the third street between Main and Pine was done in two thousand three. Looking back, it was actually two thousand two, so it's been, uh, going for a good eleven years. It's in very reasonable condition, uh, and it has very low truck traffic, so it, it has worn very well. And I expect other streets that are in, that were in pretty decent condition, uh, prior to the overlays, um, and have low truck traffic, residential streets and things like that, to also wear, uh, extremely well. It's just when, when a street is in very, very poor condition that, that all we're doing is delaying the inevitable on some of those. But, uh, my recommendation is to award contract twelve-dash-thirteen for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions for Howard?
I received a comment a couple of years ago about doing overlays, and, and that is that, uh, you go through winter, and in some of these streets that have overlays, you just scrape off part of the overlay. So, that seems to me a situation that if the street's, uh, uneven, uh, putting on only point-seven-five inches on a rough street isn't gonna do much good, or isn't gonna help too much.
Some of the places that we've, uh, done, in years past, we did what we've called a slurry seal, which is an even thinner layer. It's usually about three-eighths of an inch, and that's what we had used on West Main Street, and, and that was what got peeled up by snow plows. Um, the, uh, the University Plaza and Greenwood Avenue's portions over by the university, I'm not sure that it was necessarily snowplow action, or, or whether it's just the fact that those are, are, are poor streets to begin with. But as I said before, Iverson has promised that they will come back this year. They will probably, if you award this contract, they'll probably do it at the same time they do the other streets, uh, and they will repair those two streets. Uh, but other streets that have, that were, uh, done last year seem to be holding up extremely well. Chestnut Street between Pine and, uh, and Southwest Road is one, Sunset Drive. There are a lot of other streets that are doing pretty well.
Uh, what is the warranty?
The warranty period is one year.
And who's responsible for checking? Is that us that checks to see that these streets are in, that the warrant, that they're in good condition at the end of the warranty time period, or?
That's my office, yes.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve contract twelve-thirteen, uh, street maintenance, uh, bid to Iverson Construction in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand.
Second. I have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under information and discussion, the first item is an ordinance amending the official traffic map, map, no parking on, uh, this side of street, East Furnace Street. Howard?
Yes. Um, during our Broadway, uh, construction, we found that, uh, there had been an oversight the last time we did reconstruction on, on that one block of, of Furnace Street between Lutheran and Broadway. We could not identify an ordinance that would restrict parking on, on that street, uh, and there are no signs, uh, annotated on the official map that might have indicated that a sign was authorized but missing. That, uh, street is too narrow for parking, and on the rest of the street, this, uh, Furnace Street is, uh, has no parking on both sides of the street, uh, from Lutheran all the way to the west end, uh, well, at least to, uh, Chestnut Street. So, I'm recommending that, uh, we make this permanent. Under, uh, temporary authority, we have posted it as no parking during the street construction to assure traffic movement, but we're asking that you, uh, give permanent authority to this.
You think, Howard, it has to be both sides of Furnace Street?
The, the street is twenty-four feet from face of curb to face of curb. If you put a, a parking stall in there, that's, that's eight feet, and so that leaves sixteen feet, which is barely enough for people to pass through there. I, I don't, I don't believe it's, uh, wide enough for, for vehicles to pass.
In one side.
Even, even with parking on one side, and, and it's very, very tough. People probably have done so, especially on Sunday, when there's very little traffic and you need the parking for the churches, but I would not recommend it.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll go on to the next item, which is a presentation from the museum task force. Larry?
Uh, certainly. As you see in your staff reports, um, uh, the city council had discussed the budgets at the city's museum at our last year's budgeting sessions, and, uh, at that time, I was asked to put together a task force to review the municipal, um, museums. I have done so, uh, and I believe tonight, the task force would like to come up and report on their findings. Included in your packet is a copy of, um, several documents, but most importantly, the, the findings of the task force.
You give your name and your address, and, um, I guess you're the chair of the task force?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, John Miller, I'm with Circle in Platteville. Initially, when Larry sent out a letter to form the task force, the museum task force, he, uh, he held it out on November eighth of two thousand twelve, and he put together the task force, and he had three specific questions that he wanted the task force to accomplish. Uh, we incorporated or looked at those questions, and I think he sent you a copy of the two main questions and how to develop a plan to follow it. What the task force did is we've met, oh, approximately ten times since January, came up with a mission statement. Uh, the mission statement was the five different items that we answered in having your packet, uh, that we put together, and it was with going to other museums, uh, doing what is available, having meetings with, uh, both, um, AME Board, AME Board, reviewing another museum, the Mount Burb Museum, and how they handle the historical society in their museum, reviewing, I think you have a copy in your file, nineteen or so other museums in the state of Wisconsin. We put together our recommendation or our goals of what we feel should work or would work better in making the museum a better place. So, if you have any questions on our results, I mean, we have two other members here, we'd be sure, willing to answer any problems or questions.
Have any questions?
I had requested a list of the people who were on the task force. I actually never received that.
It's in the packet here.
In which packet? It's on here.
Second paragraph.
Okay. I had also requested a listing of those people who, uh, continued on the task force for the duration, because it was my understanding that there were some people who left the task force.
There was only one, and I sent you an email on Eric Fetzinger, where he resigned.
Okay.
Do you have that copy?
Okay.
Any other questions?
What did you find in the way of grant raising, raising funds through grants? As far as among the different, uh, museums, um, are there any particular places that you get grants from that it's consistent? In other words, if you're talking about grants, you have to have grants year after year after year?
Correct.
So, are there some that-
Task force really didn't look into where to find the grants. All we were going to do is if the council was gonna cut the budget, what could we do or what would be a recommendation to help support the museum going forward? We feel, as, as a group, what we voted on, that by changing to a historical society and having them be a tax-exempt item, when they're going to be writing a grant, it's not gonna be written from an entity owned by the city to say the city is looking for funds to help support- funds to help support the museum. It's going to be a historical society, the Platteville Historical Society, to say we're looking for money in what's available. Now, we never really reviewed the staff. We don't know what the staff is doing. However, there is 75 other mining museums in the state of Wisconsin that are fully operating and I don't think the staff has ever contacted them to find out what grants are available, how they do it. They've never had to write that many grants. The grants, when the board came to us, I think they're writing grants, but they're writing the grants for the historical reencampment or they're writing smaller grants. For grants and operations, the task force never looked into that. We're assuming if the board of directors from the historical society would set up a committee and have a special committee as a grant writing committee to go out and search this. Another example that we said in the report, there's 200 mining companies in the United States that possibly could be written and said, can we get assistance or what kind of offers do you have for our mining museum to help out? The same with the alumni association, there's about 400 active alumni that have mining degrees. I'm not sure if the museum has contacted them for assistance. That's an option that is in there. The PACE program and the Wisconsin Room are willing to help or be able to show where there would be maybe possibilities of the grant money. So we didn't really say, we had to go out and look for the grants. We're just recommending these are possibilities where they can write the grants. It's not going to be an easy task. We understand that too. And that's why with our formula, we had had a phase in of over the next five years on how to do it. Now, that's just ours. If it wants to be more, it wants to be shorter, it wants to be longer, that would be up to the council.
Do you see any time when you're going to set up a committee that does nothing but look at other historical societies? Is that in the plan?
Well, the actual plan, I feel, is if the historical society is formed, they take over the control of the, you know, the whole exhibit, that they will then have the current members or brand new members that can now come in that want to participate in the museum, they can set up their own committees and you might reach these experts or have them come in and say, well, yeah, now that we have to do that and we have to have the funds, that's what we were looking at or that's what our philosophy behind it was to say the new board of directors for the historical society who are operating the museum would have all these different committees and to be able to say, we can now go forward with it.
As you hear that, you said 75 in Wisconsin, that you meant the U.S.
Right, in the U.S., I'm sorry. As far as the volunteers, we looked at the volunteers, we looked at the hours. We currently looked at, and you've got the numbers in there, where other museums always close during the winter, they don't have full staffs. If you look at all the other museums, no one ever supports it by 100%. Some are the 50%, but they're bigger museums. Right now, the museum during their summer staffing, instead of using volunteers, hires limited term employees, 14 limited term employees a year for approximately $43,000. We're saying to save money that you could be used as having volunteers come in and produce this.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one person who would like to speak, Eric Fetzinger.
I would also like to see if there are any other members of the task force that would like to speak this evening as well.
If so, I guess if you would let me know or fill out the green sheet if you would like to speak, but Eric is, is next, so.
Good evening. My name's Eric Fetzinger. I reside at 12921 Del Platteville. I'm also the president of the Jameson Museum Association. I was initially invited to be a part of this task force, but I was wary and I let Mr. Birkey know that I was wary because of the wording of the proposal for how to approach the task force's mission. I sat through the meetings with the budget that were done a year ago, specifically the one at the police station as a working session where this issue came up and the task force was requested by several members sitting here tonight. I felt that the mission that was given to us in the task force letter from Mr. Birkey was not in the spirit with what you had asked for. It specifically called for a plan to move the museums out of the city control and come up with a plan to do that. I also heard anecdotally that Mr. Birkey made comments that if the task force came back and did not recommend moving the city museums out from under the city's budget, that it was a total waste of time to have the task force even meet. I did agree to go. I did meet the first time, sent in comments for use in the second meeting to come up with a task force mission that was broader than simply the task force mission that was given to us by Mr. Birkey. That was ignored and I chose not to continue because I felt it was not appropriate for me as the president of the JMA to continue with the efforts and the tenor and tone of those efforts and the discussions with the sole focus being on moving the museums out from under the city. These museums are a jewel of the city. They can be something great that the city puts the city on the map and have been great for this city in terms of bringing people to the city, both in tourism and in places to live. It's our quality of life. It's a huge issue for that and I felt that was not being faithfully looked at by this task force. I do disagree with most of what was in this report and the recommendation and I would ask the council to not act on these recommendations until further open and unbiased discussion takes place on the best course of action for all concerned. I believe the recommendations have not been fully thought through as some of the questions here point to in terms of the recommendations of standing up a new 503-1C, not sure that can be done in the timeline done, grants that are requested to be discussed about, there are no operational grants in the operating realm for museums. There are grants to do exhibits and add new things and move other things, but not to pay salary for staff, certainly not to pay insurance for staff. Those kinds of issues are not covered by grants of any kind. Anyone with grant writing experience, among who Tracy Roberts, who had worked with the Galena Joe Davies museums, made that very clear to the task force that those kind of grants are not available anymore. They were in the 70s and 80s. They dried up a long time ago. So I would ask the council not move forward until further discussions can be done so that we don't permanently and irreparably harm the jewel that we have in these museums in the city of Platteville. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? All right, this will be on again. Thank you to the task force. Uh, next is the tax increment district tid amendments, number four, five, six, and seven. And I see Mr. Arrington is here again. So you want to give a brief overview? I think that you've done a very good job each time you've come and I think we're beginning to understand it.
Was that code for we beat this to death? I did have just a couple of quick handouts because some changes were recommended by the plan commission and we haven't had a chance to fully integrate them into the document yet, but I wanted to show you what those look like if I could find them. So this deals with specifically tid number six where the amendment that's in your packet as written was to include eight properties. And as that was just being finished up, two other property owners came forward and asked if there'd be consideration to add them to the district as well. And we didn't see any problem with doing that in terms of meeting the state requirements on, on being able to add property to the district. So what I have here are, there's two tables in that amendment document that list what those properties are and then what their values are. And as you know, part of the reason why we are kind of in a hurry up mode here was the city's approaching the 12% limit on property value within a TIF and these stay within that, so they don't take you over the amount. So I have a, a table and then a map showing where those sites are.
As you know, there will be resolutions before you at your meeting on the 23rd to take formal action on all four amendments. All four amendments were recommended for approval by the plan commission and then with respect to tid number seven, the RDA also made a recommendation to amend that as well as to expand the sort of coterminous redevelopment area that is also downtown. So because we're expanding the boundaries of the tid, the feeling was, well, let's expand the boundaries of the redevelopment district and keep it all the same. Since you have heard so much of this, I guess I could just stop there and take questions. I will say that obviously this was a pretty complex deal and to move as quickly as everybody has has really been remarkable and a real credit to all of you and certainly to the staff in making a decision and making lots of decisions and how they interrelate with each other to kind of put all this together in the kind of timeframe that we have. And so it's been great working with everybody in doing that, the staff, PDIC, other folks, certainly the council, the plan commission. So far, you know, it's all gone smooth and your action will conclude the city's part of the deal. Then the JR B, the Joint Review Board will meet on 29th, on, on July 29th and take their final action on it. And after that, we'll package it up and send it to the state. But that actually concludes the process more than two weeks earlier than the deadline that we were trying to beat of August 15th. So again, a real credit to everybody in being able to do that.
Does anyone have questions this evening? I'm sure that if you do.
Well, I have a question. As far as the long-term picture, what do you envision, the long-term picture as far as money finally going to general fund of the city of Platteville and the other entities that get taxes?
I think the.
In other words, we've closed off, what, one TIF so far? Is that correct?
Well, you've actually, from the beginning of your use of TIF, you've closed three TIFs.
Three TIFs. And so how much are we getting for money right now? Is it going to win Angela?
I don't know. TIF one you're talking about and TIF two? I mean, I guess TIF two didn't actually, I don't know how much there was right now.
Those were decades ago.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Didn't TIF three just close, was it la- last year we just closed?
Yes. And that was about 10 million.
Three and it added 10 million to the tax base and TID eight will close in.
Probably next year.
Next year.
Next year and that'll add another.
About another 8 million.
8 million.
TIF two did not actually exist.
In value, but I'm talking about taxes.
So to answer your question, I think this positions you very well to, as you recall, what started all of this was a request from you to have us look at all five of your open districts and give you some thoughts on how you could really make the most effective use of what is unquestionably the most powerful economic development tool that cities in Wisconsin have. And essentially you went with all the recommendations. So the whole idea of that was to really position these districts and their plans and their proposed budgets and their boundaries to really allow you to make the most use of this tool. Nothing in this plan is mandatory and that really needs to be understood, any of these plans. This is an enabling tool, gives you the option to, to use this tool in the ways that are described in the plan, to build infrastructure, to buy land, to incentivize businesses and developers to come to town. So whether it's downtown or out in the industrial park or out near Menards, all of those options exist. So a lot of the plans as written currently and what had transpired before then, you know, they had sort of gotten a bit out of date. So it was a really good time to sort of stand back, take a more comprehensive view and look at how we can refresh these plans to make them really available. So especially in the downtown, you have a, a lot of opportunity that these plans provide. But as we know with tax increment finance, you can have all the plans in the world, but until development occurs, that's when the revenue shows up. So the whole idea is to really now use these districts to get the revenue rather than being so focused on how do we spend the money? How do we use the funds to really leverage private investment in new tax dollars and make that available so that when these TIFs close, there's marked improvement in value and then all the taxing districts really benefit from it at that point. Just as an example, TID four really only has one year of spending left on it and then about another five years after that to collect funds. And what is shown in the plan would be to borrow funds to make some final improvements right near TID four and then use the next five years of increment to pay that back. But that district has quite a bit of value that covers the bulk of the industry park. And I know you were talking earlier about buying more land and, you know, my assessment is that the industry park is unquestionably a, you know, absolute unqualified success. And if you continue to be able to bring in the businesses the way that you have and working with the partners the, the way you have, you will be in good shape for a long time.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Sure. So we, just, you know, we are republishing the documents just to put the council adoption date on them and then this map and then there are other maps that are in that plan, show land use and zoning are being updated. So the only major changes in the documents that you will get in your packet for action on the ninth are really going to be just these new maps and these new tables in TID six. Everything else, the plan commission approved as written. So other than changing the date and a couple of little grammatical errors that we've caught, they'll be the same, so you don't have to read them all over again.
On the 23rd.
On the 23rd, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. The next three items, I believe we've talked about these before, but Joe, if you want to briefly go over rezone for lot seven Keystone, final plat, plat for lot seven Keystone and then a planned unit development amendment for Evergreen Road.
Yeah, the rezoning request at lot seven, that's the parcel behind Menards and Walmart. It had always been intended to be a residential development, but the, the total layout of that Keystone development wasn't finalized when they did the rezoning, so it was kind of approximate boundaries for the zoning districts. As it turns out, part of that lot is owned business and part of it's owned multifamily residential. So it was a condition of approval for the preliminary plat that you approved last time was that that zoning boundary would be amended prior to approval of the final plat. So this would take care of that. It would just change the zoning of the entire parcel to R3 multifamily residential. So it is consistent.
Any questions on that one?
The next, the final plat, the same development, same property, you did approve the preliminary plat previously, but it would divide that parcel to create eight duplex lots or at least eight lots that are intended to be used as duplex residential construction. This would be the final plat that would make that a legal land division.
I had some questions about this one and you were unable to answer them last time. My question, first one is, who's going to build the duplexes? Is that going to be you that are the developer or?
I don't know. I don't know, Ken.
Nobody knows.
I didn't, I didn't know who would build anything when we started.
If, if you're going to ask the developer any questions, then he'd really needs to come to the microphone, so it gets recorded.
I'm just curious to find out what's going on, what you, if you have any plan for these things.
Ken, when we set up that whole development, we set up R1, R2, and R3 in business.
Yeah.
You know, and we didn't know who was going to build anywhere.
Well, but I thought you would have built the R3.
Not yet. Doesn't mean we won't. Doesn't mean I won't be able to find someone.
So duplexes.
This, this enables those that to do that. So originally, you folks on the council, I believe you were here at that time, wanted to make sure we had one, two, and three, R1, two, and three in there. And so we did, we did include that in there. So, yeah, I hope someone steps up real quickly and buys lots and builds nice.
I was just trying to find out, are you going to be the developer or?
I don't know. At this point in time, I'm focusing on the R1 development and we're putting up a spec house.
Okay, and in other words, it could be individual persons building duplexes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there going to be covenants to control what the? Are there going to be covenants to control what the duplexes look like?
There'll be some covenants, yeah. Right now, they don't exist. They do, we do have covenants existing for the R one because we wanted a certain type of standard in the, in that, in that development.
So these could, could become private ownership?
Certainly.
Okay. So somebody could say, "Build a duplex, live on one side and..."
Sure. Yep.
It's not known.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We are going to go off-camera, go into a work session to discuss EMS services.
Council President?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Did we hear about the putt at fifteen, fourteen, fifteen Evergreen Road?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't give Joe a chance to talk about that. Go ahead, Joe. Thank you.
If you don't have any questions, I don't have to, but fourteen, fifteen Evergreen Road, that was a planned unit development approved a few years back for Vosburgh, Beaumont, when they went into that location. They basically had more space than they needed for that business, so they requested approval to use part of that building for an apartment, a residential unit. That was approved, and it included a condition that it was only for that particular property owner, Mr. Vosburgh. It turns out that property has since sold, and the new owner applied for a extension, renewal of the rentals license, rental license on that property and was told, per the council approval, that he could no longer do that because it had to revert back to the, the business use only. He based his purchase price on the idea that he could get rental income from that unit, and he also does not need that space for business use, so he would like to continue the ability to rent that apartment. There would be no other changes to that property proposed physically. He's just asking for an amendment that basically would allow that continued use of that residential apartment.
Well, what bothers me about this is that the former owner didn't tell the buyer about the situation.
Well, the former owner was deceased.
Deceased?
Yes.
Well, then the estate?
And part, part of my recommendation is that, that provision not be included in the extension so that we don't have that problem in the future. If it's allowed to be, continued to be an apartment, it shouldn't matter who the owner is.
On the other hand, the way to deal with that may be to add it as a deed restriction.
The city attorney didn't feel that there wasn't a good way of doing that.
Deed restrictive zoning can get kind of messy.
I understand that, but there are a couple of other people who have come forward and asked for this kind of thing only because, I mean, I can think of at least one other in the city that has been granted living quarters in a, in a industrial area because it's like, I just want to do this for me, not for, and if this, to me, this kind of, if we allow this and say it's okay for this person, then, then if we need to put some kind of restriction or notation on the plat, this could happen again, is my opinion. Or somebody could say, "Listen, you did it for the people at fourteen, fifteen Evergreen Drive when they sold, so why aren't you going to do it for me?"
We've, we've already got a private residence there in that house.
I understand that. Yes, I understand that.
Any other questions? All right, then we are going to go to a work session to discuss EMS services and the draft 2014 capital improvement plan. And after that, going to close session with action on closed session item and then adjournment. So I think we'll take about a two or three-minute break. That's not long enough, a five-minute break, and we'll go to close session.